Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, April 5th, 2021, here in the council chambers for town council and remote participation by the public. Calling this meeting under order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via hybrid remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted in council chambers, and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while in progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.cia.southbridgeMA.us as soon as we are able to. For the public, our apologies for starting late. We were in an executive session before this meeting, so thank you for hanging in. A roll call vote will be required for all votes taken under this order. Please rise for the political allegiance.
Madam Secretary, roll call.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Catrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniels.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Excused. Okay. Subcommittee, considering except the town council meeting minutes of Monday, hold on one second. I'm trying to do two things here because I cannot see the board here. Considering except the town council meeting minutes of Monday, March 29th, 2021, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion of second, errors, corrections, or omissions. Counselor Ryan?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you. There is one I noticed immediately in the order, the Governor's order. It says joint special town council, Southern Worcester County Vocational School Committee meeting. It should just say town council meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Got that, Mary?
Yeah, I noticed that on some of them, so I edited it, but I'll edit that one for sure.
Thank you. Anything else? Counselor?
No.
No. Any other counselors? See none? Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniels?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Motion carries. Subcommittee reports, General Government Counsel Steves, he's not here this evening. I don't have a new meeting date. I know he has one coming up that will be scheduled because there are some items on topic, but I don't recall getting an email on that. Department of Public Works Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. We did have a DPW Subcommittee meeting on March 30th. In attendance was myself, Counsel Dow, Counsel Steves. Also in attendance was Counsel Catrona, Council Vice Chair Daniel, Counsel Chair Jovan, Counselor Adams, DPW Director Blakely, and Town Manager McCall. All of the issues that we voted on are on tonight's agenda. Agenda item number 10 is transfer for street sweeping disposal. Agenda item number 11 are quotes for street sweeping disposal. Agenda item number 12 is the West Street Engineering Contract with Ty and Bond. Agenda item number 13 is the Mill Street Bridge Replacement Project eligibility notification. And agenda item number 14 is the AC rental at the Armory. We also had a discussion on road improvements plans. We had a lively discussion about the Town Hall Facility Study, and the DPW Director updated us on lights on Main Street at Dunkin' Donuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Education Human Services Counsel Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a meeting scheduled tomorrow night, Tuesday, the 6th, here in council chambers and remote participation. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning Development Counsel Adams? Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have a budget meeting scheduled for April 12th at 6:00 PM. Also, I just wanted to clarify, or the General Gov has tentatively scheduled their budget hearing for, or their meeting for the 15th of April. That's all. Thank you, Counsel. I appreciate that. Protection of Persons' Property Counsel Lazo?
No report at this time. We have a meeting scheduled for April 8th on Thursday.
Thank you. Chairman's announcement. Just one thing that I have this evening. I received a call from the town clerk earlier today relative to a question that was brought up last meeting and early voting. The Governor has amended the order for the early voting, and early voting will be able to take place before, for all elections up to June 30th of 2021. So I asked, she asked if we would have support for us to support the early voting procedures similar to what they did in the last election. I told her that I would bring it before the council, and we would put it on the agenda to vote that early voting dates if that's the intent of council. I didn't want to assume, but I thought, given, given the fact that we're moving the polling place to the middle school, high school for this election, that it will be prudent on us as a town to support an early election. That would be a financial commitment on behalf of the council. I asked her to send over an estimated cost, which she did, based on the last election, and she didn't think she was going to need as many days as before. It cost the town approximately $5,000. And we could explore with the town manager and the finance department about whether that would be reimbursable by CARE's money, given the fact that it's, we have the COVID-related. So if I get consensus tonight, I will put that on the agenda for the next meeting to support that, and so that she can get out the information to the voters that there will be early voting.
Would you like us to suspend the rules or something?
No, we can put it on the next agenda. I just want to make councils aware, and I think I got the sense based on the last meeting that there would be a consensus on this. I told her that I would announce it tonight and that we would have a formal vote because we do have enough time for her to be able to advertise that through social media and other avenues to make sure that we get that message out.
Thank you.
So we will do that early, in-person, early in-person voting, which would be similar that they've done in the past. Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since we were here last time, as many of you know, we conducted a public hearing along with Mass DOT relative to the traffic improvement project that's going to go on in the Hook Street area. We had some participation from the public. It appeared to go well. There was also some confusion last week. I don't think it made outside of the Town Hall with regard to the town's designation, and I know some counselors did acknowledge and thank Mr. Pelletier, but we received a call last week on Thursday indicating that the town had slipped back into the red, and Mr. Pelletier alerted me to the fact that when the report came out, it showed us in the yellow, and what had happened was they put together a call sheet for the towns that were in the red, and apparently they copied Southbridge information for South Borough. South Borough slipped into the red, not us, and that was a good catch by Mr. Pelletier, going back and just cross-referencing that. Last week, I did meet with Harry Lemieux in council over at Harrington Hospital with regard to the lease for the space up at the community center that they're using. They have agreed to pay us rent starting on February 1st. We reviewed the terms of that agreement, and we, it's acceptable to us. I'm going to ask that it be scheduled at the next Gen Gov, and then it'll make its way up to the council shortly, probably for the next meeting for approval, so that I can execute that. And we will be getting some revenue that will help offset some of our costs up there. And the only other thing that I wanted to make the council aware of, it's been a past practice. The managers prior to me had the opportunity to get community compact grants to look at helping to make local government more efficient. I've spoken with Melissa Zawadzki. She, after I passed out the announcement that the availability of these grants, she looked at a couple of them. We've been talking about improving our human resources administration, the functions, especially with coordination between the schools, and I've talked to Dr. Valar. We've been making strides in that area. But we are going to submit an application to have an assessment and an implementation plan on how to improve those functions, and similarly, looking at a best practices plan for financial management. So we are going to submit that. If there's anything that needs to be approved in terms of money, we will come obviously before you when we hear back from them, but it's a short turnaround time, and what has happened in the past was the application was submitted. If it was awarded, we'd come back for approval, and I intend to do that. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presentations. This evening, we have a proclamation to the St. George Greek Orthodox Church. Vice Chairman John Daniel had approached me about offering up this proclamation, and I told him to take the lead on this, so thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. A couple weeks ago, there was some concern about celebrating in town, the celebration of the 200th anniversary for the Greek community, the 200th anniversary of independence. And I felt that it might be nice to have a proclamation from the town just congratulating the Greek community in general for their continued solid civic presence in town. So if I may, the proclamation may further explain itself. Please, that Dr. Priscilla Jimis, the Vice President of the St. George Greek Orthodox Church, is here tonight to accept the proclamation. The proclamation reads, "Whereas, March 25th, 2021, is the 200th anniversary of Greek independence; whereas many immigrants of Greek heritage have established homes and businesses in Southbridge, Massachusetts; whereas the Greek community in Southbridge continues to thrive through its culture and language; whereas St. George Greek Orthodox Church was established in Southbridge on Moore Street in the year of 1910; whereas St. George Greek Orthodox Church stayed in Southbridge after a disastrous fire and moved to North Street in the year of 1932; whereas St. George Greek Orthodox Church is recognized in the National Registry of Historic Sites and celebrates its 111th anniversary. Now therefore be proclaimed, the town of Southbridge recognizes and commemorates the 200th anniversary of Greek independence, the continuing positive impact of the Greek community in Southbridge, and wishes the community and the church continued good health and fortune. In witness thereof, this 29th day of March 2021, by John D. Jovan, Chairman of the Southbridge Town Council." Dr. Jimis?
Thank you very much.
Do you want to say what we wish?
Thank you very much. On behalf of St. George Greek Orthodox Church, we thank you very much, and also thank you for delaying it a week when I couldn't be here last week, and we really appreciate that. And it will, we'll hang it with the National Registry plaque that we have also. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Priscilla, congratulations on the 200th anniversary of that. And just one quick question. Is the church making plans for a picnic this summer, given all the restrictions?
We have thought about it, and thought about it, and discussed it, but the restriction is still, according to the Governor, 150 outside. We bring in 400 to 500. At this point, as of today, we're looking at takeout. We'll do it the day we usually do the picnic. We'll have the shish kebab dinner, but it'll be takeout.
Okay.
Right now. Might change. If everything changes for the better, it could change.
Well, that's, that's better than nothing, because I know Counsel Lazo, I'm sure, is going to agree that we miss our shish kebab and the competition between the churches of who has the best shish kebab.
We miss everything.
Mr. Town Manager?
No, I just also wanted to congratulate you. This is my first year here, and I congratulate the church on the anniversary. It's a very notable occasion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Citizens Forum, is there anyone in the, Mr. Town Manager, I'll refer back to you first.
I neglected to say before, Mr. Chairman, I had made some notes on the back of something that I should have read. Also, last week, we had bid openings for part of the shared street project. As you recall, we came before the subcommittees to go forward with a plan for rapid flashing beacons here in the town and some other shared street improvement projects. Unfortunately, we only received one bid last Friday, and it was $97,000 over budget. Our contracted engineer, VHB, is looking at it and determined that, or concluded that some of our cost, unit costs, were higher than their original estimates. Ms. Dean and Ms. Blakely have been involved. Ms. Dean spoke to Mass DOT today to look at our options because this was on a tight timeline. They've agreed to extend our contract funding out through December 31st if needed, and we were also allowed to take some monies that have already been granted to the town and repurpose them effectively for this project. So based on those two factors, DPW and the CDGB Coordinator will be working to retool the RFP and send it out in a timely fashion so that we can come back to you with hopefully a successful bid, probably in the month of May, so that we can get this project done.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Okay. Citizens Forum, is there anyone in the remote world that wishes to address the council? I am only seeing people that are involved in this meeting, in the public. Again, public does have access to this meeting. If you wish to call in, please go to the website and see the phone number that's available for you to call in, as well as the remote access information. Item 9, vote to confirm the reappointment of Michelle Connors as an alternate inspector of animals in accordance with the provisions of Section 15, Chapter 129, Mass General Law, effective May 1st, 2021 through April 30th, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Just Town Manager, do you have anything on this? Do you want to go to the chief?
The Chief Woodson has advanced Michelle Connors' name to me, and if he's present, he could comment.
Chief Woodson?
Cable, you have, are we quoting Secretary there? Chief?
I see him out there, but I'm not hearing him.
Can you hear me now, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Chief. Thank you.
Horizon commercial, I apologize. This essentially through you, Mr. Chair, to members of the council, and Mr. Town Manager, good evening. This is just as coverage for Ms. Spencer. She's out for any length of time, vacation, sick, or any other issues, and we have to do this every year. That's all this is. Ms. Connors is a neighboring ACL from the town of St. George. We have disagreement with them, and it's worked out great in the past.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a question to whoever can answer it. The form we received is the one that would have been submitted in St. George. Shouldn't we have had one submitted for the town of Southbridge?
We do.
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair. No, the St. George, what they do is they submit the exact same form on the Chapter 129, Section 15, that we submit for ACL Spencer. It gets a proven service, and all we're doing is just asking for a backup. Procedurally, I don't believe we need to do it. We never have. It's just essentially taking her name, asking the council to vote on it, and the state is okay with that. And they actually send us correspondence if those little effects made first. Just acknowledging that they have it. She's our backup. So I don't, I don't see there being any issues with that.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none? Roll call.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 10, vote to approve the transfer request from project number 67900 Landfill Royalties to account number 003499.589900.9127, Special Appropriations, Catch Basin, and Street Sweeping Disposal, the amount of $75,000 for Catch Basin and Street Sweeping Debris Disposal. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Counsel Dow, second by Counsel Lazo. Discussion. DPW, you've already commented on this. Do you want to comment more?
Yeah, this motion was passed 3 to 0 to send it to the full council for, for action. There was a discussion about whether or not this should be paid for by Casella, considering that we still have a contract. I don't know if the town manager has gotten an answer on that or not, but that was the discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Town Manager?
So pursuant to our meeting last week, I did pose a question to Attorney McKay, who has, we're holding over with regard to the landfill settlement. He had said that he would go back and pull the full agreement because I did not have all of it. He also said that he recalled looking into the street sweeping question a couple years ago, or a year or more ago, for the prior town manager. He said he would look for those communications so as not to reinvent the wheel for us, but notwithstanding, Mr. McKay's trying to get an answer for me with regard to the contract. I discussed this with Ms. Blakely, as well as Ms. Harnoy's, that these sweepings, because they were not taken at the landfill once they started closing the landfill, we have been accumulating these on DPW property, and the three years' worth of street sweepings that we have now would cost approximately $75,000 to be taken off the property and disposed of properly. And discussing where the funding would come from, the most appropriate place appeared to be from the landfill royalties account because those monies were for taking care of trash and landfill related issues. That is all I can comment on at this time. I don't have an answer from Attorney McKay to address specifically Mr. Marquetti, but nevertheless, we do need to address these. They're piling up. We will have more, so there may be future requests for monies to address this issue. But if there is, you know, response from Attorney McKay in the next day or so, I will gladly share it with council, and we will respond appropriately.
Questions? Counsel Lazo?
Where it says special appropriation, through you, to the DPW Chairman, when it says catch basin, that's cleaning of the catch basin, not construction, correct?
Yes, but they, they need a place to dispose of what they.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I believe at the meeting was saying we will be reimbursed from Casella on some point. That's what I understood from others at the last meeting. But at that time, we have to do it. We can't wait to see any.
I, I don't know the answer to that question. I had posed that to counsel who worked on the landfill settlement agreement. I'm sorry, through you, Mr. Chairman. So he's going to go back and find, he had researched this issue previously, and he was going to try and find that correspondence from me to let me know what their position was previously. If, if it turns out that they are taking it, then we will hand them that bill. No question about it. If it turns out they're not, then I think that's another discussion we can have. But for right now, we still have to move the pot.
Right.
And we have to mitigate our expenses.
Thank you. Any other questions, Connor? Thank you for reaching out to our legal counsel on that, and look forward to the follow-up on it because I know we've had that ongoing conversation. Just leave it at that. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Catrona?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 11, vote to ratify the contract with Capital Environmental LLC for up to $75,000 to be funded from account number 003499.589900.9127, Special Appropriations, Catch Basin, and Street Sweeping Disposal, and authorize the town manager to sign the contract.
So moved.
Motion is second. Mr. Town Manager, do you have anything to add on this one?
This is for the West Street Reconstruction Project, and I'm not.
No, this is Catch Basin.
Wait a minute, but I thought it was.
So it's to ratify the contract. This is just the contract for the?
No, but I thought it was part of it.
Seventy-five thousand.
Okay. I've got my items out of order then. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, so the DPW approved this to send it up to council.
Yeah, it was the contract for the 75,000, that's all.
Then it is for the street, too. I'm sorry.
That's all. Any questions for the town manager or the DPW Director? See none? Roll call?
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lazo?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
And Counsel Daniels?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 12, vote to ratify the engineering contract with Ty and Bond with a total authorized amount of $170,300. The contract amount being $160,300, and additional $10,000 allowance for any wetland permitting fees if needed to be funded through Chapter 90. Is there a motion?
Motion vote.
So seconded.
Motion is second. Counsel Marquetti, DPW?
DPW voted 2 to 1 to send this up to town council for further action. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager, anything on this one?
That was the document that I was looking at when you called upon me last time, and I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I believe we have somebody from DPW that could address any questions of the council. I just can't see who's up on the screen at the moment.
Yeah, I think.
I think Ms. Blakely is there.
DPW directed, Blakely?
Good evening. Thank you, counsel. So what you have before you is revised scope of work, adding the one phase that we spoke about at the DPW Subcommittee to include the wetlands permitting as an option. This is for the West Street project that is a joint project with CDVG, Water Sewer, and Chapter 90 funding. This is so we can start the design for West Street reconstruction, one of our target roads, obviously. I think this will start moving forward pretty quickly so that we can get this project underway.
Questions, comments? Counsel Marquetti?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, I don't think there's any wetlands off of West Street, so I wouldn't have a problem if we wanted to amend this, to take that out. I drove over there. I don't see any wetlands. I looked at the town's GIS mapping, and I don't see any wetlands off of West Street, so I don't know quite, if you want to leave it in, fine, but I don't have any problem with amending it and taking that out for the wetlands. The other thing that I wanted to say is that VHB is actually the low bid on this, so this is why I voted no, and I will vote no again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather, do you want to respond? Or do you have any response to the wetlands?
The first thing on the wetlands, actually, you can't see, but the, the river and a stream that goes into the river, both, the stream, actually, the drainage channel comes right underneath. It's part, another branch of nuisance, and it discharges. It is a perennial stream. It really never stops flowing. So that would be the reason why we could get into wetlands with that, because it is proximity of the stream, not just physical wetlands. But what the first phase is an RDA, which is part of the base, the proposal from Ty and Bond, and the, if the RDA comes back, that we need to do a notice of intent, then we're already covered with the $10,000 allowance. If it comes back that we don't need to, then obviously that money won't be spent. So that would be the reason, the way we position that. As far as the comment on VHB being the low bid versus Ty and Bond, an analysis was done on both of the proposals, and the VHB hours of service that is proposed is actually a lot less than what Ty and Bond is proposing. And after that review and reviewing what they propose to do, we felt that the Ty and Bond proposal was more in line with what level of service that we would need on this project.
Thank you. Counsel Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Heather, how much, what was the, what was the bid amount for VHB, just so?
Heather, you want to respond, or you have any response to the wetlands?
The first thing on the wetlands, actually, you can't see, but the river and a stream that goes into the river, both, the stream, actually, the drainage channel comes right underneath. It's part, another branch of nuisance, and it discharges, it is a perennial stream, it really never stops flowing. So that would be the reasons why we could get into wetlands with that, because it is proximity of the stream, not just physical wetlands. But what the first phase is an RDA, which is part of the base, the proposal from Time Bond, and if the RDA comes back, that we need to do a notice of intent, then we're already covered with the $10,000 allowance. If it comes back that we don't need to, then obviously that money won't be spent. So that would be the reason, the way we positioned that. As far as the comment on VHB being the low bid versus Time Bond, an analysis was done on both of the proposals, and the VHB hours of service that is proposed is actually a lot less than what Time Bond is proposing. And after that review, and reviewing what they proposed to do, we felt that the Time Bond proposal was more aligned with what level of service that we would need on this project.
Thank you. Council Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Heather, how much, what was the bid amount for VHB, just so?
Sure.
The public knows.
You did have that, you guys did have that in your packet, but I can tell you, when we looked at it, apples to apples, including the same number of construction hours, VHB's total was 1,000, 159,939,60. So it was, it ended up being a difference of less than 400 hours. But the total hours proposed by Time Bond was considerably higher, with a considerably lower billing per hour rate.
I have a question, Heather, just by looking at this. Could you explain the process of when you review these requests for proposal? You guys are the experts, and I'm looking at this, and just correct me if I'm wrong, the rate per hour is less for Time Bond than anybody else, and you get more hours. So even though it's a $400 difference, the rate per hour is less, the number of hours is substantially more for oversight and accountability of this project, correct?
Correct, for doing the design and the oversight of the project, they are giving us more hours in their proposal.
Thank you.
And sometimes that might mean that the proposal is considerably higher, but in this case, what we're just getting is more work for the same amount of money.
Okay. Any other discussion? Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I think we put the 10,000 allow only because it was open, not included for, I believe, the wetland and- So the way we look at it, it wasn't limited. It was open at that time, when they proposed this, that's why we say we're gonna only put 10,000, they can't increase, because if it's unlimited, they can come back with any amount, and then, you know, we're not gonna say no, because actually, we vote on it yes at that time. So that's why we say we're gonna put only 10,000, it can't be over that. So that's why the 10,000 allow. And if you look why is Time Bond, I think, sub- stress investigation, not included, and then they put 5,500, and then on top were the CCTV 6,000, and then on Time Bond is not included. So if you really look at it, I think the best one was Time Bond, that's why we went with that, and we only put a limit 10,000, we can't increase on the wetland or any allows extra.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? See none, roll call?
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marchetti?
No.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
And Council Dow?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 13, vote to authorize the town manager to sign the Mass Department of Transportation Highway Division Project 608862, Southbridge Bridge Replacement, Mill Street over McKinstry Brook, S-21-009 and S-21-003, Mill Street over the Quinnin Bog River, project eligibility notification letter dated February 25, 2021, right-of-way acquisition in accordance with requirements of the letter by Chapter 90 or other available resources. Does that make sense? But, anyway, motion?
Motion, vote.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager, and then Heather, or you want Heather?
This is part of the Mill Street project, one of the things we will be responsible ultimately is right-of-way acquisition. Ms. Blakely could answer any questions that you have about the overall project.
Council Marchetti, subcommittee?
Yes, the motion carried three to nothing to send that up to council for further action. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Heather? All right, no questions for Heather?
Not a real question, but they, Mr. Chair, through you, just want to thank Heather for all the hard work, because that bridge has been something for some time, so I'm glad to see that they're taking it over. Thank you.
Yeah, Heather, I'd like to thank you too, because, you know, we're getting the two bridges done now, as opposed to just the one, and we got that bridge reopened on a temporary basis over, from the Mill Street and towards Main Street. So we're incorporating both bridges at the same time, so that's great work on your behalf, and the assistance of some of our legislators that came down to visit us to assist in that, to get that all done at one time. I'm sure it's gonna be a hassle for some of the businesses in there, but in the long run, it's a worthwhile project. Any further discussion? See none, roll call?
Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Council Marchetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
And Council Jovan?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 14, vote to approve the rental agreement for air-conditioning equipment and generator for the community center, in support of vaccination distribution site from FEMA funds from Sunbelt for the next 24 weeks, for the amount of $30,150, which will be funded from FEMA reimbursements, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Town Manager, and then I know we have a couple people online, and Chief Normandin's here as well, if you have any questions.
So as many of you know, we are operating our emergency dispensary up at the community center. Chief Normandin was forward-thinking, looking at what was gonna happen in the summer months, as we realized that this is gonna continue sometime. So we did, as part of the group, go out and look. Ms. Blakely did go out and get quotes for the AC, and we were looking at renting it. Ms. Harnoyes had been writing back and forth with the state to get information relative to reimbursements, and because this is temporary, and we will have to justify why we couldn't use another building that did have AC, which I think is pretty easy, because of the location was part of our EDS plan, which was already in place, the size of this, it's really a unique setting that we should qualify for reimbursement for these rental costs. And I see that the Chief Normandin is at the podium.
Thank you, council. Everything he just said is right on board, to be honest with you. This is, was the lowest bidder of three state bids, so this is the lowest vote.
Council Marchetti, your subcommittee?
Yeah, sorry, through you. The subcommittee voted three to nothing to send this up to council for further action. Thank you. There was some discussion about the noise of this operation. I know Council Catrona probably wants to speak to it, so-
Yeah, I do know, I'll defer to the chief on that question, because I know that was addressed this morning at our emergency dispensing site meeting, so, chief?
What was the question again, Mr.?
About the noise on the generator.
So the noise of the generator, we did some, received the specifications for that particular unit. It's about as loud as a car engine, as it sits today. The output that, the sound that comes out of it is very quiet. It will be located in the backside of the building, in between where the big garage door is, in the alcove, so it definitely will be away from the residential areas, probably to say, three to, probably 300 feet to the closest house. And this unit will only be running during hours of operation, 7:00 to 7:00 P. And then weekends, right now, we're at 9:00 to 3:00, 9:00 to 4:00, so it won't be running all night.
Council Catrona?
Really quickly, Mr. Chairman, through you, thank you, Heather, for getting back to me, and chief for answering all the questions that I had in subcommittee. I know I was pretty extended about the AC running off the electricity, too. Very good forward-thinking, on behalf of the EOC, as I stated in subcommittee. I think this is a very, very good idea. When will we, to the town manager, know about reimbursement?
So the last email that came through was this afternoon, at about 3 o'clock. It came from the state, and I'll just read the first line. FEMA just responded there, and confirmed that the utilities climate control expenses related to the vaccine site are eligible, as we discussed, all eligible costs must be reasonable. My guess, and I don't recall there being a timeline in that email, but we'll have to actually make the expenses and then submit them. And there's usually a period of time, there'll be some, I'm sure, review, but I wouldn't anticipate much more than a couple of months after we get the bill, pay it, and then submit it to them. If there's anything more insightful, I will be happy to send it to the council.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I certainly support this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
I do have one.
Council McKay?
Thank you for the update on the noise issue, but, you know, I do have to say, if somebody was running an engine out in front of my house all day long, I wouldn't be too happy about it. But I do understand, it does get pretty hot in there, my wife works the poles, and she says, it's extremely hot. I'm just hoping that we don't have to run it all the time, just when it gets really hot in there. Maybe they could, don't have to run it when there's a nice, cool day, or something, but I support it, I'm just saying that those engines can get pretty annoying after a while. We had another engine running down there by the exit, and it was making a lot of noise, and some of the residents weren't too pleased with that either, but that's been taken care of, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Council Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, thank you, chief, for the good thinking ahead.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See none, roll call?
Council Marchetti?
Yes.
Council Ryan?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Catrona?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
And Council Lazlo?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 15, vote to accept the recommendation of the Fire Station Building Committee, and request to submit to the voters of Southbridge a referendum question on the approval funding of a new fire station to be located on Worcester Street on the next available municipal election, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm gonna step down as chair for a minute, and go to the podium as chair of the Fire Station Building Committee, and ask the chairman, Vice Chairman Daniels, to moderate any further discussion.
All right, putting on my other hat as chairman of the Fire Station Building Committee, good evening, councilors. Just for the councilors that are new to the podium, since our last presentation that we came to the council back almost two years ago, in March of 2019, we presented to the town council the results of our Fire Station Building Committee feasibility study. I had given a brief update as to the timeline of that committee, and who was on that prior committee, and if you look back at the list of people that were involved at that time. So, back at the prior work of the committee, was a request for proposal to prepare a building use and future needs analysis for Southbridge Fire Station facilities. And the quote was, "This Victorian-style building was built in 1899, and is listed on the National Historic Register." That was a comment made in 1999 by acting town manager Michael Stevens, who was the police chief at the time. On August 14th in 2000, contract between the town of Southbridge and McGinley Hart and Associates LLP was done to complete that study. And based on that study, in September, on September 26 of 2001, the USDA gave preliminary approval of a USDA project to be used for the renovation of 17,415 square feet of the existing station constructed in 1999, and the construction of 16,325 square feet, for in addition to the station, and a purchase of a new truck. That letter was dated September 26, 2001, and received by then-town manager Michael Coughlin in October of 2001. That project then went to the town council at the time, and the TAB in 2001, around that period of time, was $4 million to do an additional renovation of the fire station. And I mentioned at that time, some of the comments was, four cents, or five cents to the tax rate is too much to fix a station that was 100 years old at that time. In 2015, that prior Fire Station Committee was reestablished by acting town manager Kevin Pecos, who appointed several new members, and we had one, a couple holdovers. I was appointed, along with former council chairman David Landevan, former council chairman Kathy Nicola, who has since passed, Lieutenant Joseph Hewlic, Director of Inspections, at the time, Nick Tortus, who then was, those duties were transferred to Casey Burlingdon, who then was transferred to Michael Julian from the Building Department. Fire chief Mark DeFranzo was on the committee, that position has been changed over to Captain Jeff Matthew. And the other member on the Fire Station Building Committee at this time is Michael Landevan, and John Sugger, Sean Sugger was one of the original members of that committee. We started in July of 2015, and from 2015 till March of 2019, we worked to take a look at the fire station current setup, as well as what the needs of the department would be to go forward, and to incorporate all the activities of the fire department under one roof. We held meetings to discuss strategy, and we had a request to the town manager, former town manager Ron St. Angelo, for the funding of this study, to no avail. In 2016, a study was done, where the town of Southbridge paid $30,000 to do a study of town buildings, and I know this council has spoken at length about that study on town buildings, and at that time, they had estimated what the cost to repair the building would be, and that the outcome was that the Southbridge Fire Department building was in poor condition, and we needed substantial, either renovations, additions, or to be completely replaced. In November of 2017, we sent out a request for qualifications for the facility's design and services, and in December, around December of 2017, and we thank, again, the DPW for their assistance in getting that request for proposal, especially Matt DeGioian, who's still there, who really greatly assisted us in getting that proposal out. Five firms submitted a proposal, we selected Castle Bose, and we presented some of their findings. In 2019, we came to the council with a proposal for locating a new fire station on Marsh Avenue, based on the feedback that we got from the council at that time, as well as the residents in that area. There was a lot of pushback, and they asked us to go back to the drawing board to take a look at different locations in the town of Southbridge. We looked at a number of locations, totaled in seven or eight different locations of where we could site a fire station. We then selected the area in Central Street, across from La Rochelle Way, from the town's IRNV building, and we did some conceptual designs about that building, presented that finding to the town council, got some preliminary support for that building, and then the town council decided to go in a different direction and support a post-marijuana agreement for a business to be at that location. We have a new town manager now, and I'd like to thank the new town manager for his support of our project. He has by far been involved in our project since day one, when he came aboard, and has been instrumental in providing us some guidance, and different avenues to look at, as well as reaching out to our federal legislators. I personally had met with Congressman Nail, when he visited our vaccination center, and asked him for some assistance, if possible, in funding for this project. I know the town manager has had correspondence with, directly with Congressman Nail's office, relative to this project, so we look forward to possibility of getting in the air of our congressman, to get some monies from the federal government, given the fact that they may have some infrastructure money coming up. So when we went back to the board, we had some comments from different individuals. Former fire chief Lenny Laporte had also contacted me about this location, and asked us, should we take a look at the area where Knight Chevrolet is located on Worcester Street? That location has intrigued us, so we went back to the committee, looked at that area, talked to our architectural firm, and came up with a design that, I'm gonna now turn this over to Deputy Chief Hewlic, who'll give you a brief presentation on where we stand right now, and why we've come up with the recommendation that we have before you tonight, to ask that you support us going to the voters of Southbridge, to ask them to approve funding and siting of a new fire station at this location. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief, Deputy Chief Hewlic, and Chief Normandin's here for any questions. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Chair, Mr. Manager, councilors, thank you for your time again this evening. Could I have the ability to share the screen- this evening. Could I have the ability to share the screen, please? All right, so as the committee chairman stated, we went back at length looking at other sites. The discussion of the Worcester Street location came up and we went into that location. So, not to go into depth of what we've looked at in the past, three times before I've been before you as far as what our challenges are. You can see in the slides there, and we've talked about it before. Our fire apparatus barely fit in the building. We have temporary structural supports holding up certain parts of the building that have been there a decade at this point. The one that you can see there on the top right with the tower, that was put in place literally a decade ago, and it has shifted three-quarters of an inch since it's been put in place. So, we have one bathroom that has a shower unit in it. At this point, we have female candidates that are on our list at this point, and we do not have the ability to accommodate them appropriately. So where are we going to put it? You can see that the site of the current location of what's on that Worcester Street property, and then here is a potential rendering of a fire station on that same location. When we went through our programming phase back in 2018, we were roughly thirty-six thousand square feet to accommodate on this site. The physical structure of the fire station itself is twenty-nine thousand square feet with the addition of an outbuilding behind the building, which would take some of our smaller ancillary vehicles and trailers. So at total, this is thirty-two thousand two hundred square feet. And this is a typical lookout for what we would see there. I gave you copies of the slides because I know they're hard to see sometimes here, but facing Worcester Street would be the primary response. We would also have access to Mechanic Street from that location. We have off-street parking to the south side of the building. The staff parking and apparatus operations areas are behind the building. This does include five parcels of land from three different owners that we would look at to make this site work. So what are the costs? The costs are there before you. One thing I would like to point out is, yes, the bottom number is what we would have to look at to complete this project at twenty-five, seven, but the actual construction of the building, there's been a lot of discussions about that, about how costly it is. It's twelve point four million dollars is the actual per square foot, you know, the actual construction of the building. Yes, we have indirect owner costs, which include the furnishings and all those things. The bottom dollar is twenty-five point seven million, but at this point, we're looking at this as an all-in-one project. Other communities have chosen to break this up. When we last came to you, we were looking for a few hundred thousand dollars to do the schematic design and go a little bit further, and those would have come out of that top number. So this isn't all at once, but the actual physical construction of the building is about twelve and a half million dollars. So what are we looking for you to do this evening is that we'd like to counsel the vote to add a referendum question for voter consideration to the next available election. We hope that you entertain accepting our recommendation with this site. It will work for us. We have taken some space constraints, going from thirty-six thousand square feet down to thirty-two thousand square feet with two different buildings. We've kept costs down with the fact that it is a one-story building. There is a section of the mezzanine and the apparatus bay that shows a second level, but all that is is a storage space and a training space essentially, but the actual physical structure is one story. So I wanted to keep it short this evening. I know that we've looked at a lot of the slides of our challenges of our building to the date, so I'd open it at this point to any questions you may have.
All right, I have some questions and comment. I don't have a problem going first if no one else wants to.
Counselor Marquetti, go ahead.
Okay. First of all, this is listed here at twenty-five million, seven hundred thousand, but the town manager is proposing a thirty million, thirty million dollar bond to pay for this, and I was wondering why the increase, for one thing. That was my, that's my first question. If you want me to pause, I will, so you can answer, or I'll just keep going. It's up to you.
So the information that you asked before and I provided over the weekend was based on some of the slides I utilized when working with the Fire Station Building Committee. We had looked at a variety of different numbers, so I had taken the larger amount, which was to keep the station in the existing location, which the improvements there, that was actually closer to a thirty million dollar project.
Correct.
And I had the spreadsheet for that, just to give the, kind of the worst-case scenario impact, and that's what I had, and I guess I did not qualify that in the email. We have the debt calculator. Mrs. Wadzki, the treasurer, and I both have it. She's forwarded to me. It's a spreadsheet. I can run a similar analysis for you on the twenty-five thousand if you want, and I can probably get that to you tomorrow morning.
Okay. I'm just going to continue on here. I know that the town of Dudley, they built a new fire station addition for six point seventy million, six point seven-five million, and I personally, I don't see why we couldn't just add in addition to the fire station that we have now, take down those two bays. It's not something I, you know, I'm asking a question on. I'm just, that's just an opinion of mine. The town manager also says that under his debt exclusion plan, he estimates a thirty-year bond for the fire station, which could result in a six point five percent tax increase in property taxes. Reading the town manager's charts, it tells me that the residential property tax increases would go up six point five percent to pay for a thirty million bond over thirty years, or up to four point three percent to pay for a thirty million bond over forty years from USDA, whoever they are. Those increases are just for the bond, correct? So any other required increase in tax revenue from the levy would be on top of that. So we could be looking at a substantial tax increase in the range of, I want to see eight, ten, twelve percent tax increase. The way I'm reading your chart, your six point five percent increase is on top is just for the bond. Your chart says six point five percent tax increase on the 2021 tax rate, and the 2021 tax rate is ending June thirtieth, so we're working on 2022. So your six point five percent would be on the tax levy, whatever it is, and we don't know what it's going to be in November, but whatever it is, it's going to be on top of your six point five percent tax increase.
So again, if I may, the numbers we're using, we don't have the assessed values for 2022, so the other night when we were talking about the budget, and I had to clarify this, I had a question with Council Steve's, we only have the assessed values for 2021, fiscal year 2021. So any projections I can, to make you, or an illustration, I have to use the existing data. So yes, to your point, that is correct.
I understand that.
But again, the thirty million is more the worst-case number. I would anticipate that if I rerun it at twenty-five million, that total project cost, that the percentage increase would be lower. Now, yes, you could have increases year over year. As we all know, there's costs that are built into your budget that you sometimes don't have control over, your nondiscretionary costs, your fixed costs, insurance, contractual obligations, debt, that's already in there. And as we see this year, when I talked the other night, after we factor in new growth, we're looking at a potential of two percent. So if the taxpayers want to have a new fire station and they vote on it, they, yes, we will have to put out the numbers and show them. But over time, there are still other costs that could be incurred that will be reflected in an annual increase potentially for taxes. So it's nothing new that when you pay for your services year over year, there are costs that do go up. But if, if we want to do this and we do it by a debt exclusion, there will be an impact when you go out to bond for that type of money.
Right.
Now, to your point about the USDA, that's the U.S. Department of Agriculture. Given the makeup of our community and our size, we qualify as a rural community, and although I haven't explored it, we had some initial conversations, we would be eligible for certain type of funding through the USDA, which could be at a lower rate for a longer term. So when we first started talking about that, I threw that second hypothetical of a forty-year bond schedule, again, using the worst-case numbers. I don't think they'll be quite as bad as they're on that, but you know, people like to know oftentimes worst-case scenario and work their way back.
All right, thank you.
Because I wouldn't want to give you the lowest possible number, and then you come back to me and say it costs more.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying that it could be anywhere from, you know, a four point three percent increase to a six point five percent increase. That's your estimate, and that's on top of whatever the tax is going to be set at, and I think the residents, I don't know if they'll be overjoyed with that kind of a tax increase because that's quite substantial. You're also basing your estimates for a dollar amount on the average home value of two hundred and fourteen thousand seven. Home values in Southbridge have gone up a lot this past year. The median value is closer to two seventy, and that's a conservative estimate. Many homes that I've seen lately have been going for over three hundred thousand, so your dollar amount of two hundred and seventy dollars a year, I think, I don't think it's going to be that low. It's probably going to be closer to, you know, over a thousand a year, I would say, for the average, for the median home value. Now, I do know that they, I did have a question about the land acquisition. I believe the council chair answered it earlier, that this is more than just the Knight Chevrolet property, because it's, the Knight Chevrolet property is assessed at four seventy-four. You're offering one thousand fourteen. How did you come up with that total?
So there are five parcels that are inclusive of that. The Knight Chevrolet, when I believe there's three parcels on that property itself, and then there are two properties located on Snow Street that would be included as well. I believe one of them was around two hundred, two thirty, somewhere around there, and the other one was about a hundred, so that plus the ten percent came up to the one million.
All right, thank you. There was a question about the flood zone. This site is between two flood zones. It also has to, is on the other side of town, so it's going to have to cross two bridges, which are also in flood zones, to get to most of the town. I realize that the current fire station is also near a flood zone and has flooding problems of its own, but you don't have to cross two bridges to reach most of the town. You would for that side of town. Then there's the must-have and the should-have. The town manager's recently sent out a memo that curbside garbage collection and stormwater management are must-haves, while the fire station is a should-have, but it's not a must-have. Yet he recommends that we put the fire station ahead of the curbside and stormwater on the ballot because he fears for, to avoid taxpayer fatigue. So I'm assuming that, I'm presuming that curbside garbage collection would be in danger of failure next year due to failure, due to taxpayer fatigue. And I got to tell you, we really do need to address this curbside issue. It's a must-have. If we don't have curbside for the residents of this community, then I think you're going to have to get a giant garbage bin in front of the town hall because that's where they're going to be bringing their garbage. My final point here is on this PAC. At the last Fire Station Building Committee, a representative of Castle &amp; Bowes, the engineering company that designed the fire station, offered suggestions for organizing a vote yes campaign on the ballot. The representative suggested a political, a political action committee or PAC be formed and offered to help lend a hand in organizing this committee. She said they would provide expert advice on how to run it. They have experience in running PACs. They could also provide sample signs, brochures. Someone from the committee asked them if they could create a 3D model of the building, so when they presented to residents, they would be able to look at it. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but all taxpayers of this, of Southbridge paid for Castle &amp;, Castle &amp; Bowes to design this fire station. So if a group of residents, let's say a group of residents decided to form a vote no committee, which I wouldn't mind, I would be interested in joining something like that, would Castle &amp; Bowes also provide them with expert help on the vote no committee? I don't think they would. So my question is, could this PAC be vulnerable to charges that it is self-serving and that a contributor gets financial benefits from adoption of the referendum?
Counselor Marquetti, we were very clear at that meeting that the Fire Station Building Committee would do everything that is ethically and morally right, and that is what the Fire Station Building Committee is doing. If that vendor did say a couple of those things, he did say that we will provide you with some layouts of fire stations and your design that we paid for, he will give that to us, but he's not giving us any financial benefit to that. And anything that we do, and we've been very clear, that this Fire Station Building Committee will not participate in a vote yes campaign, that if any other group wants to vote yes and put out a campaign, they would, but we will not tolerate any deceptive behavior by any other group that isn't, so I resent the assertion that we would do anything unethical through Castle &amp; Bowes. We did pay for that. We paid for design. We paid for conceptual design. They stated they would give us brochures, mock-up brochures, that could be used in a campaign. Now, as a Fire Station Building Committee, we can put out any documentation and boards to support our project. So if Castle &amp; Bowes wants to provide to the Fire Station Building Committee, no different than we did with building a brand-new school where the architects provide those boards to us, those are the property of the Fire Station Building Committee. We will not do anything that will undermine anything responsible and will do it in a correct manner. I've been through these projects with my good friend, Counsel Lazo, and we will do it right.
Thank you.
If you want to start a vote no campaign, go ahead, but at the bottom line is, we're putting this out to the voters of Southbridge. Yes, we do understand that there's an implication that there will be taxes, and that's why it's going to the voters of Southbridge, not simply the town council that can vote yes to put the project through.
Thank you.
So that would be the decision that the voters of Southbridge have to make. The voters of Southbridge will have to determine whether they want to support this project or not.
Right.
I think a hundred and twenty-two-year-old station deserves to be put out as a question to the voters. I've been down this road before, Counsel Marquetti, and Counsel Lazo may be able to expound on it, when we put trash on the ballot ahead of public service. And back in the day, we laid off multiple firefighters, multiple police officers, and DPW over a trash question. Trash is a hot topic. I want my trash picked up, but I also believe that when you look at one shower for a group of firefighters that go out and protect our town and have to come back to the station and decontaminate themselves and reduce the risk of cancer, that I'd rather pay for that right now because it's a hundred and twenty-two years old. We put together a station that will serve the purposes of the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
All right, thank you. My question was concerning the engineering company contributing to any kind of a political action committee. So I just would like to finish it up by saying, look, I'm really not opposed to a new fire station. I would love to see Southbridge have a new one. However, the plan being offered, in my opinion, is too expensive and will burden the residential taxpayers with substantial property tax increases to pay off the bond required. We have more pressing issues, in my opinion. We have curbside garbage collection. We have stormwater management. These are must-haves, and we need paying for it now. So I think we should take care of our basic needs before we propose a new fire station. We may ultimately need to build a new fire station, but I just think it's bad timing. This is not the time to address this issue. Everyone is beaten down by the stress and loss. Everyone is beaten down by the stress and loss of town and personal revenue doing, due to this pandemic. So let's take care of our needed business first, before we sign on to a new glamorous project. I think, I think that there's going to be infrastructure coming through. I think we're going to get some money for that, and now is not the time for this project. And that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mr. Vice Chair, could I make two points?
Certainly.
Okay. The two points that I'd like to make, Counsel Marquetti, are the fact of, there is never, never a good time to spend that much money. I'm a resident of this community, I live at 395 Morris Street, my taxes are going to go up too. This facility is not serving the community's needs anymore. And if we choose not to do it now, is it going to be $30 million? Is it going to be $40 million when we choose to address it? If we don't address this now, the alternative at this point is, you saw the photos that I presented of the structural, temporary structural measures that are there. There is a five-year implemented plan estimated at $10 million, just to solve structural problems and update code issues. No new spaces, no new facilities, just to solve those problems. So are we going to spend $10 million just to keep the building operational for now, and then spend 30, 40? Who knows what that number goes as we wait? Thank you.
Mr. Manager, then Counsel Lazo.
Your one point, Mr. Marquetti's questions, probably many that would require a longer explanation. Much of the information that he's relying upon are some general slide presentations that I gave and some memos that I provided. When I interviewed for this position, it was my understanding that you asked me to come here and try and solve problems. You've asked me to look at a lot of things already. Pavement management, starting to look at facilities. And one thing I've noticed, there are numerous studies that have sat here for five, 10, 15, 20 years, on almost every one of these subjects. And what I start to see is this recurring pattern, when we come up to the point and we've got to try and do something, it seems to be that it's now is not the time, to the deputy's point. So the memo that I wrote the other day is to say, this is my opinion, the should-have, must-have, nice-to-have. And this is my strategy, which I want to share with you, is how do we achieve these goals and objectives? So yes, those are my opinions. I do believe all of these things are important to the people of Southbridge, but I want to see the fire station stand on its own merits. We have a lot of things coming down the line. If we take this and push it out five years and wait, yes, there are a lot of things that people need, and they may not give it the credit that it deserves. And then, whether it's me in five, 10, 15 years, or another town manager, you might be looking at it again. So I'm making a sincere effort, based on what you people asked me to do when you hired me, to shepherd these projects through. We already started with pavement management, so I'm trying to find creative solutions to get all of these things going in the right direction. I will recalculate. I already ran some of the numbers. When we put in the 25.7 million, it shaves close to $300,000 off the debt service. I will try and get a better prediction for you as to what the impact would be on the average homeowner. Again, I'm using the data that came from the assessors and some of the guidance from our treasurer-collecting. It is difficult to predict. We talked about this before. It's forecasting. You rely on past information and use your best judgment. And yes, I did speak to an aide for Congressman Neal. He is aware of our situation. He said that they will keep an eye out, they are aware of the fire station needs here. There are other stimulus monies that may be coming to this town. There may be a confluence of events that allow us to pull off a lot of these things. And we're keeping our eye on all of these issues, because again, that's what you brought me here for, is to try and make these things happen, and I'm trying my best to do it. And I also said that I would do it in the best interest of the taxpayers of the community. Thank you.
Counsel Lazo, then Counsel Ryan.
Yeah, the previous counselor brought up a lot of valid points, can't even argue some of the points that he brought up. But the thing is, when you look back and you do a little history and you notice that the fire station got kicked to the curb when the police station was falling down, literally falling down. I got elected to council, the fire escaped, fell off the back of the thing, the walls were bulging. You'd go see the chief and the water would be pouring through the roof into a can with a polyethylene funnel. It was the priority. Fire station took a backseat, only because the fire station was in better shape than the police station. Then came along the final answer for the school solution, when we studied the whole school system and came up with a middle high school. On time, under budget, and did not raise taxes because of that project, only because of the timing of it. There was a bond issue coming due, two town buildings were sold, and we got 87% funding. It was win-win all the way around. Timing's everything. There isn't a good time or a bad time. But I'm going to go back to the way I thought in the beginning. Do nothing is not an option. Whether you're going to build this project, tonight we're talking about putting this on the ballot, not whether you like it or not like it. I'm voting to support this. And I commend the chief and the chairman of the building committee, and Joe, great presentations all the way through. Whether anybody agrees or disagrees, the building committee should be given the opportunity to put it onto the ballot and let the big boss make the decision, the taxpayers. It's their call. If they kick it back to us, then we have to go back to the drawing board and come up with another option. But again, always keep in the back of your mind, do nothing's not an option. To drive those big trucks to those small doors, the last two bays are leaning already. Something has to happen. I'm not going to stick my head in the sand and say, oh no, that's a beautiful building. I love our old buildings. I've been sold on that in the past. Doesn't hold water. So for me, there are the nice-to-haves and the half-to-haves. And those are the decisions that the town has to make. There isn't a good time, but this is the time. We've asked this town manager, and I got to give you a lot of credit, for all the things that have been thrown at you, and constantly come up with solutions or options, for this counselor to make decisions, because we have a job to do here. There's some tough decisions. Tonight, my vote is yes. It's the easiest vote I've had all year long, is a vote yes. Let the people decide on what they think the priority is. And don't fool yourself, there is going to be a no committee and a yes committee. But the thing is, when we did the school, our engineering firm made the drawings, the outlines, the blueprints, the layout of the bays and everything, where you could actually have showings, where townspeople could go and see them. We had them at the Lions Club, we had them at every chance we had to show that new school. And that wasn't 25 million, we exceeded 65 million. So we showed what we wanted to do. Call it salesmanship, call it whatever you want to campaign, but we did our job as a building committee. And I want to give this building committee the opportunity to put their best show on. And if the taxpayers say no, then we go back to the drawing board and regroup and maybe discuss, why didn't it pass? What was the shortcomings? I'm not going to put, you want to put trash against a fire department? You can't. My thing is, we need the pickup, it is really important, no arguments. But I think tonight, what's in front of us is to go to the taxpayers and put it on the ballot. Our firefighters, this building committee deserves that shot, because those firefighters got kicked to the curb because the town thought other things were priority. Trash pickup went to the ballot. It passed overwhelmingly. Police station, schools, do nothing's not an option, gang. Now, we have a great town manager, and we need, we have a good building committee, we need to figure out how to solve this problem. But tonight, the vote in front of you is whether you want to allow the people to decide. I can't even fathom voting against this. It was always a standard procedure. If it was going in front of the voters, it was a unanimous vote all the time. Even if you disagreed with the option, you let that building committee have their day in court. Thank you.
Counsel Ryan.
Mr. Chair, excuse me. I want to say, not only do I support this going to the voters, I totally intend to vote for this proposal. The reason is, I've been inside that fire station. It is not safe for the firefighters in there. Proper body mechanics cannot be followed, because you have to squeeze in a two-inch, three-inch crack, just to even get in a truck sometimes. That is not safe. That's not producing proper body mechanics. You're going to get people, going to get injured, you're going to have other issues come up, for one. For two, that building is not in good shape at all. To leave it there, to do nothing, it's just only going to get worse. And to remodel that whole building, as this building committee has shown, would cost more than to build a new building. That can be state-of-the-art, that can do everything that firefighting today requires. For Christ's sakes, we can't even, we have to special-order our trucks to specially fit in the fire station, at an additional cost. That's a cost savings right there, when we won't have to do that. It just boggles me that the people who put their lives on the line, fighting for this town, cannot have a proper building. So I thank the Fire Station Building Committee for all the hard work, because they put years into this. I've come to four or five presentations over the last five years on this issue, as a citizen and now as a counselor. This is something that needs to get done. And I urge my colleagues tonight to vote to put this on the ballot, and I urge everyone to support this proposal. Thank you.
Counsel Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Thank you, Deputy Chief Hewlic, for the presentation that was wonderfully done, and to the Fire Station Building Committee for your years of work and staying with this project, the town manager also. I support sending this to the ballot. I think it's the right thing to do, let the taxpayers decide. It's been overdue. I don't have to say too much more, my fellow counselors have said quite a bit already. But do nothing is not the answer. I agree. Thank you.
Counselor.
I think Counsel Adams had his hand up at the very beginning of this.
I did, but I took it back to his answer. Thank you, I appreciate it, but I do, I won't raise it again.
I didn't see that, you know, I didn't see you have the right hand. I, you know, just in closing, you know, I, you get passionate over building committees, I mean, and the hard work that goes into it. I know, I spent almost 10-plus years doing the building committee with Counsel Lazo, as chairman of the school committee, to get that project to fruition, to build a state-of-the-art school that we envisioned would lead us into the next century, and won't get into all the pluses and minuses that happened with that. But when we, when we approached that project, we, as a building committee, and I won't speak for Counsel Lazo, he was the chairman, did a great job on that campaign, but we worked together as a team to not do the nice-to-haves, it was the must-haves. When we approached that building project, it was, what do we need to put in a school that will solve the issues for the town of Southbridge for the next 50 years? And a comprehensive assessment with those educators to say, what do you see in the building? How can we best lead to 21st century education? To, and put the best product before the town of Southbridge and the town council. I took what Counsel Lazo's leadership was in that building committee, and took this over to the Fire Station Building Committee and said, because there is no model, when you build schools, the mass school building assistant gives you a model that says, this is how you will set up your committee. It has to have so many people, and from different parts of the school and town and all that. There was no requirement for us to set up the Fire Station Building Committee in that manner, but I took that approach and said, if we're going to do this, let's set it up similar to the, the school building assistant, and have a council representative, citizens from the community, the building department, and that's why you have different iterations of a building inspection department, because it was a slot in the building department to make sure that they were involved in this process. We had Deputy Chief Hewlic from the fire department, we had another line firefighter as part of that group as well. So we tried to make this approach in that same vein, to make sure we could have the best station, because the one thing I never wanted to hear was, you're building a Taj Mahal. Because that's not the purpose of a building committee. The purpose of our committees was to make sure that whatever we build will serve the purposes of the fire department and the town of Southbridge in the future, but not with all the bells and whistles. I've been seeing fire proposals that go off and give you all that. So we, as a building committee, put the best product forward with a lot of thought and input from residents of Southbridge and the town council. You don't want it at this location? Okay, we'll look at others. You really want us to look at the existing station? We looked at that, we've had cost estimates, we've seen what that could do. You can't simply just tear down the two bays and throw up another bay and say that, call it a day, because building codes say, the minute you do a major construction like that, you have to bring the whole building up to code. So you have to take a look at the whole envelope of that building, and then you have to say, and we took a hard look at, what does that look like in the existing station to add the addition? Okay, we have to do some retroflex, but that, that doesn't give us elevators, there's no elevator to the second floor. What are you doing for decontamination and all that? But we took a hard look at that existing station, and some people may not like that decision that we don't, we are not keep it on Central Street, but we took a look at that. What would that cost be? How would we fit that square footage in? And would it work for the future? And that's why we looked at different locations. So I thank you for all the input. I apologize to Counsel Marquetti if I got a little excited. It's passion. It's passion when you sent, spent a lot of years on a project and you put the best foot. I know, just like Deputy Chief Hewlic, just like everybody else. I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody else. I'm on a fixed income too, just like some others. I may be employed, but I'm on a fixed income. I have a salary. That salary is X number of dollars. No matter what I do, it's a fixed salary. I understand the pressures on the taxpayers. That's why we're trying to make the best decision. But we can go back and look at that article from 2000, where a former council sit there going, four cents is done now. If we had done that renovation addition back then, we wouldn't be having that conversation, because that would have been 33,000 square feet that had been done for $4 million. 20 years later, we're at 25 million. If we wait another 10 years, what are we talking, 50 million? And the building will probably be condemned. We're not replacing a 50-year-old station. You've got another town nearby that wants to replace a police and fire station, and that police station's only 25 years old, and keeps going down at the ballot box because of the age. It's 122 years old that served the purposes for the time, and now's the time to replace it. So thank you for your time. If you have any other questions, but, thank you.
Counselor Adams, then Counsel Ado.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just, I wanted to, obviously, I'm going to vote tonight in favor of sending this to the ballot. I mean, I think it's, it's about time that they, they got to see the light of day after some decades of working on this project and, and being shut down, and it's not the right time kind of attitude. So I think the voters have to, to make the decision, and that's, that's the way it goes. I just want to bring up a couple of things, though. You know, when it came to the cannabis question, we, we brought it to, to the voters, because it was, it was something that was so big, that we thought it was very important for the town voters to make the decision, and they made the decision. And, and now we're, we're looking at good infrastructure money down the road, which is going to help us out, infrastructure money also for, for the fire department, that possibly can be helped out down the road as well. I keep hearing curbside trash pickup. Yes, that is a must-have, we all understand that. But the great thing about our curbside advisory committee was that we did it so far in advance, we didn't rush through this. And yes, one of the financial options to pay for it was to raise the taxpayers' property tax 5% to 8%. It was. But we purposely left that off to be able to show all the other options that were out there. So I, I'm in agreement that maybe, as we discuss this next year, or whoever's going to be on this council next year, discuss that. But we gave so many financial options besides curbside options. Nobody said it has to go to the ballot. Nobody, it's up to the nine who are going to sit in here next year, in July. By the way, there's going to be at least two, three more elections to be able to put it on if the council decides that they want to raise the tax revenue. on if the council decides that they want to raise the tax revenue to pay for the curbside collection. But we, we found out, Councillor Marquetti found out, CDBG money helps out with transfer stations, doesn't even cost us a dime directly out of our taxpayer, taxpayer base. We gave so many options that we actually gave ourselves extra time to come up with a, a good idea, where we can all argue the point, we can listen to residents as we go along, and, and not hurt the, the fire station. Again, I'll say it, Councillor Lazo brought it up, it's really up to them selling it and getting it all through there, and I'll make my own personal decision, my wife will make her own personal decision at the ballot, if this goes through this evening, but that's our choice. But the curbside, we gave so many options, and if anybody wants to know about it, by all means, I'll sit down with you, I'm sure Councillor Marquetti, Councillor Steves, uh, the residents that helped us out, the, the department heads, but we gave a product to the town manager for his department heads to take a look at, and then be able to answer any questions, and then come to us with some more ideas, great ideas, that, that can really help this town. So I keep hearing curbside, it is a must, but didn't say you're required to raise the taxes at all. There's a lot of options, financial options on there. So I just want, I want to clarify that, it's not a, something that, that's gonna hold our feet to the fire next year, that, it's up to the nine people that are up here at that point in time to make that decision, and the, the pressure the residents put on them. So I just wanted to clarify that, that's all. Thank you very much, I appreciate you guys doing it, I know it's been frustrating, I know it's passionate, um, but that building has got to go, you know, so, all right, that's all you guys, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dow.
Thank you, Vice Chair, through you. All these years we're here, beautiful Southbridge, our house is low tax, we're getting money from Casella, we're not gonna raise the, the tax, because we have other place to cover. Where the money for Casella? What did for the town? Road, fire department, town hall, uh, what was improved? All these twenty years, we're getting all this money, and we keep telling the residents, oh, we're gonna keep your house, uh, tax low, you'll be happy, but we don't give them nothing, we give them zero. Show me one improvement happened in this town, we're keeping that, uh, tax for the residents low, nothing. We, we, we lied to them. Okay, we're gonna make you happy, just sit and don't say nothing, you're paying so much on, on, in tax, but we have no road, uh, road new, we have, uh, no sidewalk, we have no, uh, town hall, we have no fire department, we have nothing for them. Now the time to look, okay, we wanna raise the tax, I understand it's facilitated, but we've given them something. We, we, we've given them road, we're gonna give them new fire station, it's very important with all these disease and virus we're getting, uh, these guys, I, I live in town for more than twenty, twenty-two years, I served seven years on the coal fire department, and I know how it is, it's very tight, the, the room, the shared bedroom, the basement, when they wash the hoses, the water go down, is mold down there. They keep patching that fire department, they need fifteen, twenty-minute minimum to take that truck out of the bay. When they come back, they wanna wash the hoses, they do it outside in the cold. We, we are sitting home, and, oh, we hear the silence, what happened in town? Now the Facebook, oh, the fire there, fire there, but these guys out there, freezing, washing the hose, washing the unit, preparing for the next fire or next ambulance trips. We have a hundred unit coming up to town, more residents, the community is growing, and we just looking at the little fire station, we have to deal with it, and, and it's not fair for these guys risking their life, serve the community, uh, make sure they're safe when it's fire, make sure they're safe when they go to the, to the hospital or they're sick, uh, make sure, uh, they stay healthy to come back and serve coronavirus, different virus, this, different diseases. I mean, it, it's not about raising tax, about looking what we're giving for our children and our next generation, like Councillor Jack say, twenty years ago was four million, now twenty-five. It's never the time, it never, uh, we spent a lot of money to, uh, get, do studies and, and, and found out how much it costs, what we need to do, and then when it got to the town council, everything shut down, because we wanna look good. Okay, residents, I don't wanna raise the tax now, I'm a good, I'm a good councillor, vote for me next time. No, I wanna give them something. Even if they don't vote for me next time, because I raised the tax on them, but they're gonna remember, I give them fire station, I give them a new road, I give them a town hall, I give them safety for their children, I give them good health for the, uh, fire department, police department, I don't leave them with nothing, just because I don't wanna raise the tax. I believe it's not that fire station for these guys, the chief or his team to, to look good, it's for the community, to be served good, to be served safe, to be there when it's fire on time, not delay, uh, now with the residents is growing, they might ask for, uh, more ambulance to be able to serve or whatever, why we have to wait for another town to come serve us? It take twenty minutes, forty hours, forty minutes sometime, one hour sometime, to take somebody from the street, have an accident in our community? Why we have to do that? It, it's not only for, oh, we look good, no, a new fire department, no, for serving the community, to give them the right service, the safe, the safe service, and keep our guys healthy and safe from any, uh, danger, disease, or any, any other thing. Thank you. I'm gonna support that tonight.
Councillor Marquetti.
Um, just a couple of quick things. I can assure you, I don't vote up here for popularity or to get voted again. I, I'm pretty sure I'm not very popular tonight in this room, I can say that. Uh, the other thing is, um, the buck stops here, Councillor Lazo, and you can't have it both ways. If you are for this, then you vote for it. You can't, if you're against it, you vote against it, so I, I want the residents to know how I feel about this spend, this expense. So that's why I will be voting no. Thank you.
Councillor Lazo.
Just a quick closing comment on this. The previous speaker, I have a tremendous amount of respect for you tonight. Why do I? Because you stand up and you wanna stand up for what you believe in. I don't have a problem with that. But to vote in front of us, you're gonna vote not to allow the citizens of Southbridge to, to vote on this. That is a sin of democracy. I'm not talking about whether you want it or not, I'm talking about let the citizens decide. That's what's in front of us, read the agenda item. Doesn't say, are you in favor of a fire department? It says, to put it on the ballot. It's the purest of democracies, when you hand off to the people. As, uh, Councillor Adams said earlier, you know, there are some issues, we handle it in the chamber, there's some issues that should go out to the ballot. I have a lot of history on not going to the ballot or going to the ballot. This has to go to the ballot. And without any, I'm not gonna tell anybody how to vote, that campaign will take place when the people take it over. The people will have an opinion on it. People are gonna be against it. Doesn't mean I dislike my neighbors, whether they're for or against this issue. Send the message to this council, that we don't want it or we do want it, and then we'll go back to work. This is a very interesting council. I respect each and every one of you, and we don't agree a lot, but we always hammer the issue, we don't hammer each other. And that's why I've served on boards and commissions. This here is a breath of fresh air, and the agenda item, I welcome it. I want the citizens to tell me their opinion, and they will tell us loud and clear. So for me, I urge all, all the councillors, whether you're for or against this, the question in front of you is whether to go to the ballot, not whether you're in favor of the fire station or not. So I think we really have to let the people have the opportunity, don't stifle democracy. Thank you.
Okay, um, if everyone is done, I'd like to say a couple of words, if I could. First off, I support putting this on the ballot, I believe the voters should speak, but I would like to address the voters, so I could for a minute, and say, why not Southbridge? Why not Southbridge? People on the streets talk about wanting to improve the roads, or the buildings are falling apart, or there are no rail trails. So I say, why not Southbridge? We deserve good things in this town, because we are a good town. We're a damn good town. So I'm asking you, the voters, to take that into consideration on June eighth, because I believe this will pass tonight. If it doesn't, I'd be surprised, but I will vote for it, so that you can speak to us. But I will definitely support the ballot question a hundred and ten percent, because I think taking care of our firefighters, removing dangerous and carcinogenic conditions that they're working under, uh, working with, uh, non-gender-specific locker facilities when people need their privacy, is abhorrent. So I am definitely for the ballot question, and I am definitely on the ballot, and I am definitely for passing it when the time comes. Thank you. Is there any further discussion? There being none, I need a motion, please?
There was.
There was a motion?
Yeah.
All right. There being no further discussion, we'll take a vote at this time. Mary, could you call the roll?
Councillor Adams?
Yes.
Councillor Katrona?
Yes.
Councillor Daniel?
Yes.
Councillor Dow?
Yes.
Councillor Jovan?
Yes.
Councillor Lazo?
Yes.
Councillor Marquetti?
No.
And Councillor Ryan?
Unequivocally, yes.
Mr. Vice Chair, if I could, just like to thank those councillors that support this measure to go to the ballot, and, uh, thank you, Councillor Lazo, for those words, because you're right. Let the people speak. Whether you agree or disagree with the project itself, the question is, are the voters, and put it to the people. And you're right, we're elected to represent the citizens of Southbridge, um, and when there's a question of this magnitude, go to the people. That's what we did with the cannabis, there was a lot of discussion on cannabis, but that was unanimous, to go to the ballot and let the people speak. Um, so thank you, I look forward to, uh, seeing what the results are. I believe the next timeline was, would be, is once we refine what the final number will be, uh, the ballot question will come back to what the actual language would be for the council to support to the voters. This was just so allow us to get to the ballot, so before we went any further to, to find the language and exact wording on that, that will come back from the town manager to the council, uh, for approval of the specific language that will go before the voters. Thank you. I just thank all the members of my subcommittee, uh, now, or the Fire Station Building Committee that have worked over these years to get it to this, this, this point. Um, it's been a long time coming, um, a lot of hurdles, uh, and I look forward to, um, working in the future, one way or another. But like my good friends have said, do, do nothing is not an option. Read, read the study, 2016, seven point five million dollars worth of repairs, nine million dollars, that's gonna go probably to some subcommittee to study these town buildings, and that's in the back pocket too, it doesn't address any space issues, it's just, uh, things. So as we work through those issues, I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Mr. Town Manager.
Just to, um, Councillor Jovan's point, um, we have a draft ballot question, I wanted to wait to see what the outcome of tonight would be, I will just make sure that that is sufficient, I, I believe it is, but I would just get councillor's opinion on that, and I will come back to you at our next meeting, which I believe is on the twenty-sixth. The timeline requires that, um, a vote of the council approves the form of the ballot question to be sent to the town clerk, um, no later than thirty-five days prior to the election, so our next meeting should fall well within that timeframe, and so as soon as I have that, that'll, um, it'll be forwarded in your packets, and we'll vote on that the next time we meet.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager. Again, thank you for your work on that, because you have given us a lot of guidance on how we're gonna navigate this, so thank you very much for your help. Excuse me. Councillor.
Mr. Chair, do we have to, do we have to pass the gavel back over to you?
Yeah, throw it at him.
Throw it out, I just wanna make sure. Well, a good thing for an eye, I guess.
So, thank you. Chief, Deputy Chief, thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, councillors forum, Councillor Marquetti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, I did send an email to the town manager concerning the, uh, the dirt and sand that's piled up, stockpiled over by the, by the common. I was driving the other day and I saw a big gust of wind take it right across the road on passing cars and pedestrians who are walking, uh, so I, I was just asked that something be done to have some, a, a wind erosion control done over there. Thank you.
I did take Councillor Marquetti's email, as I normally do, I acknowledge it, I forwarded to, um, Ms. Blakely, our DPW director, she spoke to the contractor, and she texted me earlier the eve, this evening, that that has been addressed, um, that they have, in fact, um, covered it, they covered up the sand pile, so that it shouldn't be blowing towards pedestrians or the vehicles.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Councillor Katrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. A couple of things this evening, uh, we heard a lot tonight about the fire station, we heard last week about town hall, we hear about building up commercial and industrial businesses in this community, and then we talk about where the revenue is to support these projects. And it all comes back to economic development. And we, we constantly talk about this frequently. Maybe it's time that we look as a council, this council or the next, to begin to set up some goals and objectives going forward in this town, maybe five-year, ten-year plan, so we know what direction we're gonna go in for economic development in this town. That's what's going to drive the tax rate down, and it's gonna also attract business and industry back to this community. Yes, we need the projects that we've discussed tonight, sure, we need the many, many repairs done to town-owned buildings, and there's gonna be more coming before us. But we can't do it without economic development in this community. And again, I don't know the direction, Mr. Chairman, but, um, again, whether it's this council or the next council, to put together a plan of, 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 of goals and objectives to, um, and I would urge my fellow councillors to, to let's consider some thoughtful planning as we go forward with that. So that's one. The other subject that I'd just like to speak briefly about, and again, Mr. Chairman, can we bring forward to subcommittee, and I don't know the subcommittee to bring this to, and start talking again in subcommittee about the bike trail? The rail trail? I'm sorry. Maybe we can start looking for the state to help, or, just so we can get, find out where it is? I don't know where it is today or where it stands.
Um, yeah, that went through you before.
Yeah, I think, I think it went through me, I know they discussed it, but, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, I think it did go through me, um, a few years back, when we went through the whole process of it, and then, um, obviously it went the way it went. But I do know that they've been working on some ideas, um, downstairs, I know the town manager has been working on some ideas, uh, with something like that, so, about, about the rail trail and, and a few other things, so.
We can probably get an agenda for P and D, just to circle, I'm not gonna use that word, circle back, but.
Circle back.
We'll circle back on that, okay?
I'd like to see this. I'd like to see that, that would be me that I'd like to attend, because I think the bike trail is good for economic development, it's good for bringing new businesses into town, it's good for bringing people into this town who wanna shop, who wanna go out to the restaurant, who wanna eat, so I, I would welcome that.
Absolutely, Mr. Chair, if I may, absolutely, I, like I've said multiple times, um, during councillors forum, if somebody's got something to bring up, then I'll, I'll put it on the agenda, but nobody's done it yet. And so what I'm saying is, is I think we, we've discussed the rail trail, um, I think it's something that needs to take a look at, but I think there's a whole bigger picture out there, just not the rail trail, it's, it's everything from just the infrastructure that needs to take place to, to, I mean, we've talked about the schools and all that kinda stuff, but I, absolutely, I, I welcome those, because I gotta tell you, and, and I'm gonna brag about the economic development team downstairs with the town manager, when I came on board, and I don't mean to be long-winded.
No, sorry.
The planning and development was meeting once every couple of months. We meet twice a month sometimes now. I mean, there's stuff happening, but I just saying, it's, we, we, I'll hold a meeting in a heartbeat, if somebody just wants to come up and bring some ideas, and we'll work it all out, or we'll sit down, have breakfast and have a discussion, and bring it to P and D. Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I think it's a great idea to, uh, take another look at that, I know there was, um, I was having breakfast the other morning at, next door over here, and, uh, two individuals that were there, were having a conversation about the rail trail, about some of the impediments that we had had previously, and we can talk. And we can talk offline on it, but, so I know there's some buzz out there to try to look at that rail trail. I do know when I, when I had the opportunity to meet with Congressman Neal at the Vaccination Center, he had mentioned the rail trail and how he had gotten some money for the town of Southbridge. And I had informed him that the million dollars that we had been allocated for that trail got eaten up by the Department of Transportation, Matt, was it DOT?
It was DOT.
DOT, to do shoring up of land that was falling down. So, we weren't able to capitalize on that million dollars, and Congressman Neal was shocked to hear about it. So, I think that's something that, he was touting that he had gotten us this money. I said, well, it really didn't go anywhere because of those issues, but I'm sure that's something we can engage them as they develop an infrastructure budget through the federal government as well.
Can I just throw real one thing out, because you bring a good point, not to have a P and D right here in the meeting. But I will say this, is we spent $138,000 of our own taxpayer money, taken away from the river, the kayaking area over here by the AO, put it towards that, I believe, and I'm sure Ms. Blakely will correct me if I'm wrong, did to help the designs, and then come to find out, the million dollars was just a little part. It swallowed it all up, but we paid for some of that work.
So, we do have a design for that rail trail from Dudley to Golden Creek?
To Golden Creek, yes.
So, we have a design and everything, but then it became the funded, but we'll schedule that up and see where we can go on that.
Thank you.
I know there was a group that wants to continue that all the way to.
All the way to the center of town. I do, I think, I believe it's all the way, at least to the RMV area.
And this is great dialogue that we have as council, because these are the stuff that you throw up, of how we develop economic development, you know, because we have the RMV going, or we don't know what that is, and who knows what that is. But if you develop a rail trail behind that, and it's not an RMV, do you do something else as part of a rail trail? So, a lot of good conversations, so looking forward to it. Thank you. Councilor Lazo.
I'm very optimistic on everything that's happening in Southbridge. I'd just like to plead with the citizens to be patient with the roadwork. I know it's very time-consuming on being detoured. But you wanted roads, you wanted infrastructure, you got it. And it's going to continue. It's going to continue on South Street and West Street, and this town manager has put together a bonding issue to do over millions of dollars of roadwork. And I think that's finally happening. Along with that is going to need patience for everybody to work through the maneuvers of the detours, and to be pleasant to each other, and just be happy. When you see that Main Street paved and let it up and all done, it's going to look wonderful, and they don't have to dig it up again, because the sewer water, gas shut off, everything's being done all at once. Building on a corner being worked on, Wells Project in full tilt. I look down at the globe and how many buildings have been taken down in the last five to 10 years, and I look at all the parking lots being built and stuff. It really is looking up. I urge the citizens of Southbridge to maintain and try and keep this council intact the way it is. I see great, what I call a think-tank mentality. Jovan and I, Councilor Jovan and I always talked about when we served on other boards, that the think-tank mentality is probably the best way to go on all fronts. Put all the disagreements, throw everything on the table, hammer the tin, because everybody looks through a different set of lenses. You see bike trails. I see deregulation of taxation. I see different things. Mr. Marketti is an asset. I don't want him ever to leave the council. He's the check and balance on spending, always holding the line. That's a good thing. But this council has a chemistry of not hating each other, but really fighting the issue. And I like that. And I really have served on a lot, a lot of years, three decades or better, and I see this as the comeback. Councilor Daniel says, why not Southbridge? Love the saying. But the thing is, the comeback is what this town needs. The infrastructure that's being worked on, American Optical, Mary Wells, the Mills, I mean, guys, I got to tell you, I've been around a long time, and this is optimism at its best. You want to fight over a fire station? Let's have the fight over the fire station. I don't hate Mr. Marketti because we disagreed tonight. He has a job to do, he answers to his voters. I have a job to do and answer mine. But I think this council feels holistic, and it, think-tank mentality continues. There isn't an issue. We don't have any problems. We have all solutions. It's how we get there, and that's the work of this council. Thank you, Mr. Jimmy.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just want to say to the residents, by raising the tax, it's not a bad thing. As you see now, road is getting improved, businesses coming in. I understand the tax was up a little bit, but there's no houses on the market in Southbridge anymore. Everybody want to buy a house here, invest money here, because they're seeing, Southbridge is growing, and it become stronger, businesses, improvement, all kind of thing is going on. And you see, soon the house go on the market, doesn't matter what the price is, somebody's going to buy it. And this is a good sign of our community, its improvement, because everybody want to move in. So, I understand some people living on a certain income, and it's hard, but we need to improve the town. We can't keep saying, we don't want the tax to go up, but we have, we have nothing in this town. 22 years ago, Southbridge was the beautiful town around this area, because we keep saying, not the time, we don't have the money, we don't want to raise the tax. We, right now, we're in, I'm embarrassed to say it, we're in the lower, lower part of all town around us. And now, what we doing, it's improvement, and we're going back up on the list, Southbridge as a, as a business town, community, cleaners very soon after we fix all the road, all the sidewalk, what we doing. So, you got to look at it all the way around, not only the tax-wise. So, I hope the residents understand what we're trying to do. I know a lot of people are going to be mad at me, but it's okay. At the end, I want to see a better Southbridge from all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of things. One, last week, it was mentioned that we should have, we should go down and spend some time with our departments. I agreed with that. So, I contacted the manager's office, and he connected me with the DPW, the Fire and Police. Heather was the only one to respond, so I spent some time today with DPW, and I got to be on the ground. It helped open my mind quite a bit, and I would urge everyone who hasn't been down there, hasn't spent time with DPW, hasn't gone on a ride, go do it. Heather, it's more than a menable to having you, anybody on this council, come down and spend time with them. I got to see the trucks they work with. I got to see this, I got to go in the sweeper, and the 20-year-old one, the one from 86. Now, it's almost, what, like 40? It's almost 40 years old now, I guess. I'm still thinking it's around 2000s. But yeah, almost 40-year-old sweeper. And I got to say, the DPW has done a good job at maintaining their vehicles, and it's given me a lot to think about, especially going into this budget cycle as we start considering some of their vehicles. I also want to say, we've been talking about it, I, every time I've spoken about Southbridge and why I moved to Southbridge, it's because I saw opportunity here. I chose to move here and leave Sturbridge because I saw Southbridge as a place that could grow and could be great again. And this council has done great work to help move Southbridge in the right direction. I'm very proud to serve alongside all of you, who all bring up valid points. We may have fights, we may disagree, but we do good work. And the town is benefiting, and its citizens are benefiting. So, thank you to the councils up here for giving your time, and as has been said to the citizens, keep watching this council, because we're doing good things in this community, and it's going to continue to look up, and I'm very optimistic about the future of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I just wanted to, I did have a question. I didn't know if General Gov was going to have a meeting. I just don't want to forget about the grant that we had pushed back over to them.
Yeah, he's aware of it. He was going to try to do it last Thursday, but because of the Department of Transportation hearing that was going, the fire station building committee. So, he's aware of it, and we'll get it back up.
Yeah, I would have asked him tonight beforehand, but he wasn't around, he couldn't make it this evening. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention that I was invited over to RMG a couple of weeks ago, and I messed up somewhere with our, with the calendar, the meeting calendar. But I sat down for two and a half hours, over two and a half hours today, donors and some of the stakeholders over there, and it was a great learning opportunity. And again, that's one of those things that we, I just want to, I just want to say thank you to them for inviting me to that, that business and to learn a few things that I didn't know before. And, you know, I look forward to it, and I've already told them that I'll be working with them as well on other projects as we move forward, and we'll be in contact in the next couple of days. But I just wanted to say thank you to them and showing me their site and their business. Last thing, I just want to wish the Leonide Jay Lemire Post 6055, happy 75th anniversary come April 7th. It was chartered in 1946. Lot of your fathers and grandfathers and mothers, all that kind of stuff, you know, where they're part of that big push through, through Europe and the Pacific. And I just wanted to, the VFW was recognized by the National VFW for 75 years of service to its community, and I do know they're rebuilding, constantly rebuilding, to continue to support the local community and the veterans it works with. So, just wanted to wish them a happy anniversary, 75 years, not anything shake a stick at, because I believe one of the other ones was over 100 years old. So, just over 100, so that's pretty, pretty amazing that these lasted this long. So, I wanted to wish them a happy anniversary, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Adams, I had an opportunity to tour RMG. I got an email from them and spent probably almost hour and a half, almost two hours with that group down there, and they showed me the facilities. They are quite an employer for the town of Southbridge as well, so it was quite the facility that's there. And, you know, I offered to work with them on, so I look forward to seeing their input. It was quite an operation that they have, and how, I believe they were, I think they said out of 10-day habilitation, was it 10, I believe? 10 in the state, they were only one of two that would continue to stay open because of the best practices. So, kudos to them for the population that they serve, because of COVID-related, that they were closed down. Others were closed down, and they were able to continue operations. So, it was eye-opening, and I didn't realize all the services that they do provide, their 360 holistic approach to management of different things. So, I encourage anybody that got the email, they did say they sent an email to every councillor, so if you do have an opportunity to go down and see that, that was quite, quite the facility. So, Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I want to echo Councilor Lazo a bit. It's been a good council. It has been a good council this past year, and I think for the past three years that I've been on, I've seen nothing but a council that considers progress as being its mantra. And I think because of that, the department heads have also seen that, that activity coming from the council, and I think it spurred them onto bigger and better things as well. I think we've gotten some fine efforts from our department heads in terms of being progressive, being aggressive in getting grants, being aggressive in terms of what they want done for their departments, being aggressive in terms of making good, strong budget decisions and presenting us with budgets that are reasonable and fair and balanced, but consider the town and what the needs of the town are. As a result, I think this town is popping, to quote a person that I was talking to, and I think popping is a really good word. We're really exploding now. One of the other councils said that it's hard to find a house in town. That's true, and that's a good thing. And I hope that we're able to continue that as we continue to make strong decisions for the towns, the town taxpayers. Thank you, that's all I have. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 26, 2021, here in council chambers.
Thank you. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilor Catrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Lazo?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yes.
And Councilor Adams?
Yes. Thank you, and have a good evening.